I would like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Education to order. The next regular board meeting is Tuesday, October 11th at 7:30 PM in the board meeting room. We're about a month into the school year now. Our students are settling in, teams are competing, plays are in process, and for all but our littlest, homework has kicked in in earnest, as most of us in this room know. Our parents' nights, which began just before last meeting, are now complete. Thank you again to the staff, the teachers, and the PTOs who made those so successful. It is truly a joy to see our community be able to come together in person again. That time together is irreplaceable, and we thank all of the people who have made it happen. In addition to some of our regular business, including our monthly financial report and a policy update, we'll be reviewing two important initiatives. One relating to the mental health of our students and the second to security of our buildings. Both of these are topics the board has been discussing for many years, but they've taken a particular prominence at this time. We'll receive a mental health update and have a possible motion to approve the hire of a mental health director. This is the third discussion of this topic we'll be having in public session. Our profound thanks to Monica McNally, our first selectman, and Ali Ramstek for joining us this evening to be a part of the discussion. We'll also be having our first public conversation on a large security initiative. While we've been talking for a long time, this is the first public conversation about this set of work. Thank you again to Monica for being here, also to Brent Hayes of the Police Commission, and particularly, and most importantly, to Don Anderson, the Chief of Police, who has worked hand in hand with our administration. This will be the first of at least two public conversations on the topic. With that, I'll turn it over to public comment. If anyone in the audience would like to comment, please step up to the podium. You'll have three minutes.
Good evening. For those participating in person, please approach the microphone and wait to be acknowledged by the chairperson. For those participating via Zoom, please click the raise hand option. The facilitator will acknowledge and unmute you when it is your turn to speak. For all participants, please state your name and address for the record log. Each participant will have up to three minutes to comment. We will begin with those in person.
My name is Amanda Callahan. I live at 2 Tokneek Beach Drive. I've lived in Darien for 16 years. First of all, thank you Board of Ed members, the Darien Police Department, the Board of Selectmen for reading my emails and considering this important issue of hiring SSOs for all of the elementary schools. I appreciate all that you do for our citizens and to support our children in this community. Sandy Hook affected me and my family on a very personal level. And while I am proud of Connecticut's strict gun laws that have been passed since the shooting, quite frankly, I strongly believe there should be a big increase in safety, security, and policing in all of our public schools. Locking doors and windows, teaching kids to hide under desks, and having a rotating police officer is not enough to save physical lives in the event of a mass shooting. A mass shooting can happen at any time and any place, but schools have been shown time and again to be targets. We have a duty to protect our children, period. We cannot cross our fingers and hope that our town does not become another statistic. I see no reason why MMS and DHS have full-time armed officers present at their schools, and the elementary schools are not afforded the same basic level of security. I am so proud to call Darien my home. It is a community that puts family and children before anything else. Darien is also one of the wealthiest communities in the nation with many resources at our disposal. At this point, we have to stop praying for gun laws to improve and take local matters into our own hands and protect the children who are the backbone of our town. This is just common sense. This is not about politics. It is time for SSOs or SROs to be present in every school, at every entrance and playground, not just for tomorrow, but for every day in the foreseeable future. Thank you very much for taking the time to listen to my comments.
Thank you for your time. Is there anyone else?
My name is Natasha Tomai. I live at 6 McLaren Road South. And I have two daughters at Royal Elementary School. One of them is in fifth grade and the other one is in second grade. And I want to echo support for SSOs or SROs, either one, as long as we have armed guards that collaborate with the police department in the schools. It would make me feel much safer. I feel as if an active shooter were to enter one of the schools, our kids are sitting ducks. I mean, that's the bottom line, the kids, the teachers. If there's somebody in the school who has a firearm and is trained, then there's a chance of neutralizing that shooter before there's a senseless loss of lives. So there's nothing more important than protecting our children. I feel very strongly, and I want to thank the board and everybody in the Darien Police Department, everyone who collaborated to do all of the research on this and interested to hear the presentation tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Anyone else?
My name is Kate Bates. I live at 33 Ridgely Street. Thank you all for your time and service in our town. I'm speaking tonight again about the curriculum being put in front of our students, once again in the form of a survey. I have a daughter who is a senior at the high school and was given a survey in her health class the second week of school this year, titled "Your Medical Family History Survey", all about you, all about your parents, all about your grandparents, all about your siblings. Asking on each page if you, your parents, grandparents, or siblings drink alcohol, abuse drugs, smoke, if so, how much. Then they ask on the students' page if they drive over the speed limit, wear a seatbelt, or have multiple sexual partners. If so, please describe. For those of you who aren't aware, the Protection of Peoples' Rights Amendment is a federal law that provides certain rights for parents of students, among other things, students' participations in surveys. There are eight protected areas, and this survey violated at least four: mental or psychological problems of the student or student's family, sex behavior or attitudes, illegal antisocial self-incriminating or demeaning behavior, critical appraisals of other individuals with whom respondents have close family relationships. After speaking to the principal and after being directed to the Health Department head, I was told it wasn't a survey and it didn't need to be handed in. That was the answer. It also had been recently added in the past three to four years. First, legally, it never should have been handed out. Second, it was distributed on a public server, presumably for the gathering of data results on a Google dial. Third, I don't know about you, but when I was given an assignment by my teacher, I assumed it was to be handed in. Lastly, despite the title at the top calling it a survey and it being in survey format, I was told it was not. Thankfully, our household has no reason to be defensive about this line of questioning. Rather, we should all be offended by this invasive line of questioning and gathering of information from our schools into our private activities, habitual, medical, and sexual, especially asking my 17-year-old daughter if she has multiple sexual partners, and if so, please describe. Who was she describing it for? Where did this go? Luckily, my children know better than to participate in any survey handed to them by the school. Her response was to cross out each page and write "private information." I also am fully behind having the SROs, the SSOs, and more protection in our elementary schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
Joanna Walsh, 17 Pleasant Street. I am a co-chair of CDSP. We know scientifically that armed officers don't prevent school shootings. There is no research that says otherwise, including the research in administration's memo. We know that armed officers create negative outcomes for all students, especially among the marginalized, like the disabled, Darien's largest vulnerable student population. However, in the specific case of Darien High School and Middlesex Middle School, the school resource officer has been a positive experiment. So why aren't you bringing that model to elementary schools? Most of our parent body does not understand the job of a school resource officer. An SRO is a current sworn police officer specifically trained for this position. They are armed, but they do not guard the doors of the school. They are inside the building, either in their office or interacting with students. They report directly to the Chief of Police. There's a partnership between the police and the district. A school security officer is not a current sworn police officer. They are retired. They require less training and make about $20,000 to $40,000 less than SROs. They are also armed, but do not guard the doors of the school. They would not report to the Chief of Police, but to a newly created Director of Security. This director does not even report to the Superintendent, but to the Director of Finance and Operations. This Director of Security is not required to have a law enforcement experience. Whether it's SROs or SSOs, there is not an armed officer standing guard at the school. The positions are not security guards. They are meant to be members of each building's community of staff and students. Back to the proposal, why are SSOs good enough for elementary school but not good enough for DHS and MMS? This proposal keeps the current SROs in place. Would SSOs have more specialized training with their youngest students? The presentation in the meeting materials suggest otherwise. In fact, the frequently asked questions ask specifically, quote, "Is the SRO a better model with this cut down on the bureaucracy?" The reply is that communities who have installed elementary SROs felt the SRR program was more understood and accepted than SSO model. But the SRO model would require the Police Department to hire six additional officers and have them all trained at the National Association of School Resource Officers. We look forward to hearing from both Dr. Adley and Chief Anderson while the proposal is for an SSO model, not SROs. If we know empirical evidence is that armed officers don't prevent school shootings, but the model at DHS and MMS is one that should be rolled out to the rest of the district, why is it not the same? Thank you.
Would anyone else like to speak?
Good evening. My name is Deborah Ritchie. I live at 16 Littlebrook Road South, and I am the co-chair of Council for Darien School Parents. We just have a few questions after reviewing the materials. Given the annual cost of almost $0.5 million for the SSOs and the Director of Security, how will the district ensure that necessary educational and mental health resources can also be funded with the additional budgetary pressure of these new positions? What are the ongoing annual costs associated with these positions, including materials, training, and professional development? Will SSOs receive OT for working at after-hour events? With the current economic challenges and ECR cap, there will be even more challenges to fund education. Moreover, the district has not yet implemented any new resources or programs for mental health, and the strategic plan and DEI work is ongoing. While the Director of Mental Health will be funded using budget surplus this year, it will be part of the budget for fiscal year '24. These new positions will represent a 0.6% increase to the budget. How can the board be certain that town officials will support, as some often criticize the Board of Ed for being too top-heavy? The process seems very rushed with the turnover of the RTM on November 8th and the RTM vote for the appropriation on November 28th. Could you explain the reason why? We are worried about FERPA protections as it pertains to body cameras. We understand this is being reviewed with council to ensure the district protects all students, including our most vulnerable. Some parents have asked if SSOs will open carry or conceal carry. What kind of mental health screenings or background checks will be administered to candidates for these positions? If we can't fill all the positions, how will the district determine where the resources are allocated? Or is it all or nothing? Can you clarify what you mean by sociological factors as driving this need? Could the board and administration please elaborate on the job descriptions for the SSOs, including what it means to be actively responding to incidents, fights, or other issues that threaten the safety of students, staff, and guests, ensure the safety and security of the facility by enforcing district policies and procedures, assist with student traffic in hallways, assist with arrival and dismissal of students and lunch supervision as needed? Thank you.
Thank you. Would anyone else like to speak?
Katrina O'Connor, 15 Highland Avenue, the Chair of the Special Education Committee for CDSP. I just have some specific questions regarding some of the duties of the SSO officer as they are outlined in the proposal, specifically with student engagement. Actively respond to incidents, fights, or other issues that threaten the safety of students, staff, and guests. Assist with student traffic in hallways. Assist with arrival and dismissal of students and lunch supervision as needed. My questions are, will the armed guards have proper training in how to engage students who are protected under Title II of the Americans with Disabilities Act? More specifically, will the armed guards be trained and regularly recertified as staff are in the use of protected holds? They're a part of the physical and psychological management training, or as staff know, is PMT training. What is the protocol for an armed guard engaging one or more students who are in a fight or students who are in a crisis? I think you tried to ask and answer this in your own document. So you ask, is the standard for the use of excessive force the same for an SSO as it is for a teacher or other staff member? And you answer, as district employees, SSOs would be held accountable to the same standards as other staff members. Considering that these are armed employees, what are those standards? This is not very specific in the proposal. I think we need some more detail and assurances. Excessive force standards might look different for an armed officer and might look different to a child with a disability. To be clear, I'm asking this because of the level of engagement with children that you are requiring in your job description. This proposal needs clarity, deeper discussion. Implementing this plan has very real implications for all children, especially our children with disabilities, and I look forward to your answers.
Would anyone else like to speak? Is anyone online?
Lori Olson, you are unmuted and recognized.
Sorry, for some reason, I can't turn my camera on. Hi, my name is Lori Olson, and I live at 16 Littlebrook Road North. I speak tonight as a former co-chair of the Darien High School Parents Association. After reviewing the materials for the Board of Ed meeting tonight, I was surprised to see a new proposal of armed security officers at the elementary schools. What surprised me most was that in 2019, the DHSPA spoke during budget season about security. What we were told then was our schools were very safe. I'm going to read the last paragraph of our public comment made during the 2019 Board of Finance public hearing. It goes, "Lastly, we were disappointed that the high school security booth was moved to a Level 2 priority capital project, especially since the cost estimates will likely be completed by the end of the school year. We have listened carefully to the details of the administration's progress so far, which includes environmental studies and discussions with PNZ, thorough traffic studies coordinated with the police, as well as recommendations and support from the police chief. And we agree that the high school is unprotected. When people drive to other schools in Darien, they do so to drop off children, to attend a meeting at the school, or for some other school-related purpose. But DHS is the only school that is a cut through to anyone and everyone. This fall, an intoxicated driver drove into the school's loop, jumped the curb, and crashed in a guard rail about 15 minutes after school was dismissed. Parents have reached out to us with questions and concerns about security, and we will be watching closely to ensure that the security booth is moved back to a Level 1 priority next year. We understand that the Board of Education is awaiting more information, but we would like for the Board of Finance and all town organizations involved in the funding of this project to please make the security booth a top priority next year. Thank you." That was the last paragraph of the DHSPA co-chair budget speech to the Board of Finance on March 12, 2019. Back then, we were told the schools are safe and no money in the budget, regardless of what the police chief recommended. What has changed in three short years? Are our schools unsafe? And why hasn't this been moved back up in the priority list? Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes. Carolina McGoy, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, good evening, everybody. Following up Lori's, Mrs. Olson's comments, and she actually mentioned a few of the things I wanted to mention tonight. I feel that DHS is an extremely vulnerable school. I think our loop should be closed during school hours. I went today to the school twice to drop things for the cross-country team. Everything is open in the back, the cafeteria is open, anybody can walk in, and thankfully, nothing bad happens. So to me, the SSO seemed to be a perceived improvement of safety to our children and not a real solution to improve security. So I beg you to, and I'm looking forward to the conversation tonight, and listening to your thought process and explanations as to why we're going this route and why we are not focusing as well in DHS and MMS. But I implore you to please, please, do something about closing the DHS during school hours, because that is a very, very vulnerable school for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Alicia Johnson, you're unmuted and recognized.
Hello. Thank you so much. I am thankful for the opportunity to speak tonight. I want to speak specifically to school safety. And I'm speaking about it not in so much as I want to advocate for against the proposal to have armed policemen in schools, per se, but I want to talk about how important I think it is to really shore up school security. I was teaching middle school at Horace Mann in New York when Newtown happened, and trying to explain that tragedy to my students was extremely challenging. And then the next couple of weeks and months and years, going through what they were sort of muddling through in terms of, you know, whatever this is, duck and cover, you know, hiding behind desks and use this basket for shelter behind this thing. It was just so absurd. And the students were extremely scared. And then it went on from there. I mean, we had Marjorie Douglas and Uvalde have really captured, you know, the national attention. And I think it's something that we have to reckon with as a society, but tonight I want to talk about how we reckon with it in Darien. We know this tragedy can happen anywhere in any part of the country. With my own ears, I have heard residents or children of residents talk about the guns they have in their homes, including high-powered assault-style weapons. So we know those guns are here, and what do we do with that information? We've heard from some concerned parents and citizens tonight talking about the high school being more locked down. I mean, I think that's entirely appropriate. My children are in elementary school, and I personally would advocate for anything that keeps that school more safe. If you think you need to put someone armed in there, okay, but do other stuff, too. Okay, it's not just that. It needs to be really systemic. Look at how do we keep the children safe, given what world we're living in now. Thank you.
Ms. Johnson, can I get your address, please?
89 Raymond Street.
Thank you.
Meg Bott, you're unmuted and recognized.
Meg, you're on mute.
I actually use Zoom for work, so this is a little embarrassing. Not really. I'm over it now. Thank you for your time. My name is Meg Bott. I'm at 2110 Post Road. So I'm going to switch gears a little bit. I know the focus has really been on school safety, but I kind of want to revert back to the curriculum. And I want to ask the board to really turn a sharp eye to it. So all around us, throughout Fairfield County, and in fact, throughout the nation, we are seeing news of inappropriate materials being provided to students. Parents are seeing things of concern and raising those concerns within their communities, but often those concerns are minimized. So I had concern over the required reading, Things We Lost to the Water, which is assigned to my daughter for honors 10th grade English. This book does contain sexually charged subject matter, but that's not specifically where my concern lies. These specific passages are just not well-written, nor do they aid to progress the storyline. They don't add to the character development, nor to the plot development, nor does it provide much value aside from shock. So it makes me wonder why this book was chosen. Because, and I quote a passage, "After he came, she got off him, and he closed his eyes. When he opened them, she was gone," end of quote. It's not exactly inspired writing. Alternatively, if the motivation was to take from a more diverse group of writers, I'm not convinced this is a good introduction to the canon of Asian and South Asian literature that is available. Thirty years ago, we all read The Joy Luck Club, and it remains a remarkable piece of literature for its compelling storytelling. Twenty years ago, a South Asian author named Bikram Sait wrote a groundbreaking novel called The Golden Gate, which is written entirely in iambic pentameter sonnets. These are concepts that would be of particular fit for an honors-level English class, but topics and themes that are otherwise sensitive or taboo are vital to introduce as well. And I support the discussion of controversial material within the safe space of a classroom. A well-trained teacher under the right framework can conduct healthy debate and allow our students to be exposed to differing viewpoints. That is how we raise critical thinkers. But reading books that present with prose and thoughtful treatment of sensitive subject matter are the books that an honors class should be reading. Salman Rushdie, one of the most celebrated and controversial authors of the modern era, will eventually take his place onto the syllabus. And if the goal is to elevate the work on an honors level, it should follow that only masters of their craft should be included in the required reading set. So I'd like to hear, at some point, the district's rationale surrounding the use of this text and what considerations will be in place when vetting future required reading. Hopefully, my concerns are not dismissed as easily as you dismissed your fellow board members' concerns at the September 8th curriculum meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else, Chris?
Armel Jacobs, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, can you guys hear me?
Yes, thank you.
My name is Armel Jacobs. I am at 12 Fitch. I'm speaking tonight against armed guards in the elementary schools. The data doesn't support it. The research shows they have no deterrent effect. It feels like a knee-jerk reaction to, at best, it is a knee-jerk reaction to some horrific, awful tragedies that we have all felt and are still in the wake of. At worst, it is like a weird thing going down on political lines, and our kids are going to be the ones who lose for it. I don't really see why my six-year-old should have to be around an armed guard when the research or data doesn't support it. There's talk of them being like sitting ducks, and I mean, let's just be real. Like, we are all sitting ducks. Like, that is a fact of life in America in 2022. There is nothing that one armed guard can do to stop it. And when you talk about common sense, the common sense, we watch it all play out. It's not going to stop a crazy person with an assault rifle. So I think before we kind of go really far down this road, I think we should ask ourselves, why really are we doing this? Is it really going to protect our kids? Is it worth what I have to now explain to my kid about why there's someone who's armed in their school? Like, why are we really doing it? And I guess in that vein, I guess I'm curious about where it's coming from. I mean, we have awful tragedies in our community. We have a mental health struggle in our community. There's a public outcry. The kids are coming to the board asking for help. I understand where the mental health initiative is coming from. I myself have experienced life as a mixed person, as a person with a mixed family in this town. My kid has experienced what it feels like to be different in a school that is very homogeneous. I understand where the DEI initiatives are coming from. Where is this coming from? I have not seen a public outcry on this. It feels like there are just a couple of people behind the scenes moving chess pieces on a board the way that they see fit, that feels right for their taste and their political ideas. I want to see a public outcry about this before we go through this crazy expenditure. All that being said, I am really grateful for everything that you guys are doing, not just to keep our kids safe, but to enrich their lives and create incredible educational opportunities for them. And I'm grateful to the DPD for keeping us all safe and also serving and protecting us here. I feel very well-protected, and I'm grateful for what they do. I just don't think we need that. I just don't think we need armed guards in the elementary schools. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jamie Zionik, you are unmuted and recognized.
Hi, Jamie Zionik, 15 Holmes Court. I'm going to change the subject again. I apologize. I'm speaking tonight because we had a very difficult start to the school year in my family. My 10-year-old daughter in sixth grade... My ten-year-old daughter in sixth grade, who suffered from social anxiety for, for quite some time, experienced a 211 call from the staff at MMS on her third week of school. So my question to the district is a bit foundational, as you're looking at the Director of Mental Health. Do all guidance counselors and school psychologists have the same basic training and use the same rating scales when assessing when to call 211? Are they all using the Columbia Suicide Rating Scale from my PPT today? I understand that that was not used in my case. I would like to understand. It's still very unclear to me why, what happened, happened to my ten-year-old daughter. It was very traumatic events that followed, so I appreciate your consideration of those questions. Thank you.
Thank you.
There are no more raised hands?
Okay. Thank you for your comments. With that, I'll move on to the superintendent's report.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you to all the members of the public who are here this evening for a variety of discussions. To our public officials, thank you for your service and for being present this evening, and to all those people online. I did distribute a sheet of paper to the board just prior to the meeting. Just for your record, that was a page, page five of the memorandum that I wrote to the board that's actually online. So you have the correct version online. The board didn't have the correct version, so just for your information. I'd like to say congratulations to some of our National Merit Summer finalists at the high school. We offer our congratulations here to Lily calls, Ellen Gosarid, Catherine Khan, and William Moles. Congratulations to, to our students, and they, they move forward with the opportunity to compete in the National Merit Scholarships. Congratulations to them. The individual student reports for smarter balance and NGSS have been sent out. On Thursday, September twenty-ninth at eleven AM, there is a Zoom meeting. That will be Julie Droler, who is our Director of Elementary and District Testing Coordinator, will facilitate that meeting. If, if parents are unable to attend, we will post that on the website for families to review thereafter. Just by way of an update, COVID cases last week, we had eight for a total of forty-one since the start of school. That has been relatively very limiting in its disruption to any degree. So I want to thank the members of the community, our parents, for following the protocols. October eleventh through the twelfth, the NASE accreditation collaborative conference will be taking place at the high school. There will be a few board members. He'll be participating in there. And the Board Communication Committee, the first meeting of that is October seventh. And next week, October fifth, the school will be closed in observance of Yonkabor. Thank you.
Thank you. Student representative reports.
Good evening. Since the last board meeting, the DHS Wellness Center has been successfully opened at the high school. Judging from the single week it's been open, the Wellness Center has been met with an overwhelming positive response from the student body. The last week also witnessed our first wellness weekend, a weekend of no homework and no tests the following two days. And as for this week, the Darien High School Club Fair will be held on Thursday during all four lunchways.
Thank you.
Good evening. In preparation for DHS Names Day this year, the upperclassman team, which includes both of us, will meet for the first time tomorrow night from five to eight thirty. Just as a reminder, the Names Day program is meant to foster acceptance and spread awareness of hate speech occurring in DHS especially. In other news, DHS three to three oh eight has revealed that the spring play is Newsies. More information will follow.
Thank you both. Okay. Approval of the minutes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting and regular meeting held on September thirteenth, two thousand twenty-two? Mr. Maroney, seconded Mr. Sini, all those in favor? That is unanimous? Any board committee reports? Parent?
Thank you. We, the curriculum committee met last September eighth. I apologize for not being, being here for the last meeting to report. We talked a lot about what we did, the staff and faculty did over the summer. We talked about improvements to the curriculum that have been made for this coming year, and we talked about a little bit about what our schedule will be going forward. Our next meeting will be October thirteenth, and we look forward to seeing you there.
Thank you. Anyone else?
In the Finance Committee met last Thursday, we discussed the monthly financial report, and the administration has a transfer for the board to consider it, which we recommend it as a committee.
Okay, thank you. The Policy Committee met and will be looking at, not that I was, while I was there, but we'll be looking at the policies later. The HHR Committee is working hard on finalizing schematic designs and is hoping to, we've talked about this, but is hoping to be here for approval on October eleventh. Oxbridge continues as onward and upward. Anything else? Okay. Presentations and discussions, mental health and wellness update. Dr. Radley.
Thank you. When I give this mental health update, I want to recognize our public officials at the town level, and as I may say, particularly, Alaran said, for all of our support for our students, our children in the town, our staff has been instrumental in, in providing the responses, so we thank her for that and for her leadership. And so this is, this is an update from our last memo. It's sort of, it sort of comes quickly, and some of the topics you've sort of heard about, because we've reported on some, just sort of in between the last formal report back. So some of what we're saying will be familiar to you in terms of terminology. So the first, the first sort of update is, is around the staff development. And all of our staff were trained in question, persuade, and respond. That was QPR training. And that was also, came out of the committee that Ally runs, and we were able to have the hub work with all of our staff, certified and uncertified staff to be trained in suicide prevention. The PLC days at the, at the high school on September sixteenth, staff were trained and had a follow-up with, by Juann Harper, or Harpel. Juann did a workshop for our parents during a tragedy last spring and did, did, did an impersonal, was scheduled for in person, but did a remote workshop for our staff, which was very well received. She literally, literally wrote the book on how to respond to suicides in schools. Just, just terrific. If there's an opportunity for, for board to see her, I would certainly encourage that. We may actually bring her back again. And Mark Brackett obviously conducted the ruler and the convocation speech. So ruler has been rolled out and up, up and down the system, pre, actually pre-K through twelve. And we also continue with, just, just to mention it, we also continue to work with our DBT, dialectic behavior therapy. And our consultant for that is Alex Miller, who continues to work with our staff on that matter. For student support, Juann has described the Wellness Center, and it was tremendously well-received by, by our students. It's, it's so wonderful. If you're up in the high school and have a real opportunity to see it, it's a wonderful environment for our students and a wonderful initiative from our council department, and we thank them for that, because they are, they're supervising it just within the schedule of the day. There were a couple hundred kids were, were in there in the first week. And again, it's been well-received, so I, I know some other things will come out of that. In collaboration with Silver Hill Hospital, we did the extra curricular participation feedback. I think that was well-received by the parents and also by the students. We had staff from Silver Hill who conducted all of those workshops, so it was consistent in the message. And the focus of it was around the stigma of mental health issues. Lastly, administrators were trained in apertures, or some of the administrators were trained in aperture, and that is our SEL assessment. That will be given in November and the spring. So teams are going to be trained between now and then to actually understand the, the tool and also to be able to deliver it. We've also met with the town, some of our town officials are here this evening, to review the mental health department job description and the function of that, because we know that the lines, the judge, this job description, as many do in our district, will cross over, and we'll have to work collaboratively around those issues. So again, thank you to Ally and our first lackmen for participating in those activities. And we're also pleased to support the National Suicide Prevention Month as it closes out here in September. The Out of the Darkness Community Walk has been sponsored by the town, and that's the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. We'll be supporting that. We'll have members of our staff, and hopefully, our student body will also be able to participate in that walk. We are in, just by way of, I think we're in month five of post-vention, month five to six, so we're, we're coming to, close to another phase.
Are there any board questions or comments? Ms. Webb?
I was just curious. You mentioned that three hundred students access the Wellness Center or check the Wellness Center out. I was wondering if those three hundred students were there voluntarily? They just, three hundred students came voluntarily, I mean?
Oh, yeah, they're all, all the students go voluntarily, yes.
Could you just talk a little bit to Desa, and what is that, is that administered to every student? Is it certain grade levels? I'm just still a little unclear as to what that, that process is.
Right now, it's elementary and middle school, and there'll be a letter that goes home to parents, and families do have an option to opt out if they do not want their child evaluated with the inventory.
Well, families able to see the assessment prior to?
It'll have sample questions. It's, it's, it's five questions, so. I think they might be in the letter. I have to double-check, but they're not secret questions.
Can you give an example of what evidence-based social-emotional learning looks like? So we can make it concrete for us.
Want to go? Or you want me to keep going? So evidence-based social-emotional learning, I've talked a lot about implicit, explicit versus implicit examples that happen in the classroom. So in explicit, there would be a lesson, direct instruction on how to work together. Take the same idea. The teachers are creating conditions all of the time for students to work together. So there's times when those behaviors are taught, and there's times when students have those experiences. So we're trying to be intentional about what are the skills that we're trying to build, and they relate to the castle standards. And it's really about understanding of self, how to work with others, understanding the environment around you.
Okay.
And the inventory questions, when you see them are, they, they speak to that. It's just about that day-to-day, how a student is, is functioning in school.
Okay, thank you. Sarah?
Yeah, sorry, I have another follow-up, but does it, will parents be able to see the results of the screener? Or only notified if there's?
They, I'll get back to you on that for sure, but it's a, it's a five question. So they would know if the child doesn't, if they move on to the next level of intervention.
Julie?
Thank you. On the Wellness Center, just briefly, I did get feedback in my own home that the oatmeal raisin cookie was delicious, but perhaps more importantly, the vibe was chill and welcoming. So, but there were good things said. Welcome weekend, excuse me, wellness weekends were also well-received in the best household. Desa, I am curious, and it just, we may just not have decided, but nine to twelve, I know there is a Desa screener for high schoolers, and it sounds like we're choosing not to use that, or maybe we're looking for something better. I'd love to hear a little more on that. And on timing, when do we expect to screen K to eight? And do you then re-screen? Like, is this like a baseline, and then you'd go back in six months? If you could talk a little for that.
Sure. So there's two a year. So there's one in November, which is a universal screener. So if more than a certain amount of boxes are checked, then a teacher would go into a more-depth inventory to determine if the child needed additional supports. And then the post is in, in the spring. With the high school specifically, it's not that we're definitely not using Desa, but we're looking at some other options as well before we determine if that's the best tool. At the high school level, it's mostly a self-reporting tool, and there's flaws to that. But there's also flaws when you have so many teachers that could potentially do an inventory. You can have a very different read based on who you have from one class to the next. So there's complexities that go with the data that comes from those.
Yeah. Ms. Brown?
Thank you. Just to follow up, Alan, I believe at the end of your comments, you mentioned that while we're about to leave the post-vention phase and enter a new phase, we've not, so not yet done so?
No.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I had another question on another topic. I am very grateful for all the work that the town has done, working with all of the district folks working through this. I would love to learn more about what the Mental Health Task Force and Post-Vention Group do, and what the Post-Vention Team's Behavioral Health Programming Subcommittee does. Is that available somewhere? Can we learn more about what goes on in those groups?
We can most certainly learn about what goes on in those groups. Ally, Ally and I, or Ally and Scott, we can, we can, we can provide an update to the board on that.
That'd be great. Thank you.
Related to that, Alan, can you talk a little bit more about sort of what you're looking at? I know we're a little bit in process, but good collaboration is somewhat formal and somewhat informal. Where are you, what do your discussions look like today? I see the memo here, but I'd like some more detail about what the relationship with, to and from town looks like.
So one of, one of the recommendations we have here is the Director of Mental Health, which comes next, and we would suggest that that position also serve as co-chair, some of the committees that Ally's running from, from the town. And anything around mental health, we would be working, we would be working proactively on with, with the, the town services.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else?
And I'm still looking to hear more ways that we're getting student input into the things that were when and how appropriate. But that, that's a piece that I think is so critical in making, probably, especially for our older students, but in making things meaningful and relevant as we move forward.
All right. That, I'll move on to discussion and possible action on a district director of mental health position. This is our third public conversation on this topic. So we have discussed it in detail, but there are always questions, so I'll open the floor to anybody who might have anything, or unless you want to talk first, Alan.
I'll just say that, again, I, I appreciate the people who have collaborated in this, particularly the town, but we've also had our mental health professionals collaborate around the job description, the design of this. And so I, I recognize them and thank them for it. In addition to the job description that you see, there are state mandates that we got to fulfill, and that's the Family Care Coordinator, a district CF, Climate Coordinator, mental health programs for athletes. These are, these are, these are all, are one of those new legislation. And so this position also would service those particular positions. But I'm sure the position a couple of times was supported, and I'm pleased to continue to answer questions.
Okay. Well, are there any questions?
Yeah, so I asked a question in an email, and it's kind of off of the public comment about how, if, if we're asking someone to change the climate of the school, I don't, I don't particularly see that that is the same person that's going to do all of this collaboration and coordination. It seems like it's a different skill set to me. And I'm wondering, do we, and I, I guess the question is, do you agree with that? Or do you think one person can do both jobs? Because I think changing a climate is a very unique skill set. And personally, I think someone would be bored doing this job if they can change a climate of a school.
So I don't think someone's going to just, I don't think this position is designed just to change the climate. I also think respectfully that the job that this does with the job with the, the town, they are two distinct, different functions. There are areas, significant areas where we're going to collaborate on, but those are two distinct functions where we do need one dedicated person here to oversee the, the mental health and wellness of the students. This person is not the sole person to change culture. Culture, as you know, changes in many different ways over long periods of time. But certainly, in responding and leading issues around mental health and being on the forefront of it, that's what the person's going to do, provide professional development, bring programs and opportunities for students and services to students.
Sure.
May I just add to Mr. Murray's question? If you look at school climate, the nexus between school climate and the curriculum and everything we'll be doing in terms of the job description. So school climate reflects what we're teaching students. It reflects how students relate to each other, how they respect peers, how they respect adults. And the climate that you're really not, you know, changing climate might be a different way of saying, really, developing support systems for students. developing support systems for students where they really learn how to support a healthy climate and wellness for each other within our school community and the outside community. So we should see it on the athletic fields. We should see it in the classroom. We should see it in recess. We should see it that it really reflects a climate that has reflected for for diversity, for equity, for mental health, and for all the aspects of what we're doing, what that was. So it's not separate. There is a nexus between them.
Anyone else? No? Okay. We have a motion on the table. May I have a motion to approve the district director of mental health position? All those in favor? Oh, motion, sorry. Mrs. Parent moves. Any seconds, Mr. Seeny? All those in favor? That's Ms. Best, Mr. Seeny, Mr. Maroney, Ms. McCammon, Ms. Parent. All those opposed? All those abstaining? That's Mr. Brown and Ms. Worm. Motion passes. All right. School security recommendations, Alan? And Chief Anderson, thank you. Thank you, Ally.
Good evening again, as we enter this discussion. Chief Anderson, thank you again for being here and for being part of the discussions the whole way along. So I'm going to give a sort of overview and I won't deliberately leave out topics, but if if there are questions that have come up and board members want to ask them, certainly you have the opportunity to do that. I'll just share just a couple of things just to start with. School security, first and foremost, is the absolute top priority of any administrator and the Board of Education for our students and for our staff. That's always the top priority. And it continues to be. It's also in our strategic plan. So school security, the board has worked. Well, I only talked since I got here, right? Every year we work on school security. Every year we do updates to the board and executive session because of school security. Every year we're reviewing, how can we improve school security? And we've made significant improvements to the infrastructure, protocols and personnel over the last couple of years. And we, so we continue to do that. That's an, that's an ongoing responsibility and an ongoing task that we collectively engage in. So you're going to have, with school security, we do have the physical infrastructure, right? The heart, just the hardening of buildings and so on and so forth. You've got personnel that is associated, whether it's the SROs or what you see up here, where the school liaison officers or our campus monitors, these are things that for the most part, you're familiar with. And our protocols, which goes to sort of what Dennis just talked about a wee bit, but related to this goes to the culture and practices that we have in place, whether it's our emergency planning system or whether it's how you get into buildings. Now, I will say this evening, there'll be things that I cannot comment on, both to the board and to the public. And in public session, I'll do my best to talk to the issue as best as I can and as clearly as I can. But if you're asking why I want something or why something has to be in place, these are discussions that the board has been engaged in in an ongoing for several years. This particular topic did not come up quickly. This particular topic has been talked about for well over a year. Yes, it's come to, it's come to the table a little bit more, maybe from from Texas a little bit, right? That was in the spring. But our board was looking at that well over a year ago and we were engaging ongoing in discussions about schools of security. I'm always looking at school security. Our schools, if it's brought up, are our schools safe? Yes, they're safe. They're absolutely safe. There's degrees of safeness. Right? And there's reason plus to it. I would, I'd be the first to say I hate the loss of innocence, so to speak. Whether you're a high school student or whether you're a kindergarten student, that we, that we are have to be in a position or we are in a position where there are firearms at schools. But I prefer it not to be the case, yes. But that's a different question. I will say too, in looking and reviewing school improvement, or sorry, school security, the board's done that in consultation with administration. One of the questions I had, so just being very honest and pragmatic back to our members of our community. We have SROs at the high school. Whoever came before me, boards who came before me, superintendents did a great job. They put them in place. And they serve different purposes, SROs. But they also serve the purpose that they carry a firearm. And they're a first responder. And they respond for our students. If anybody is thinking that that's not the case, please tell me, right? It's different, right? And the SROs do a super job and we work very closely and collaboratively with our police department and under Chief Anderson's leadership. But they carry a firearm. And I think it's a fair question to say, should that be the case for our younger people? Your superintendent's recommendation is, yes, it should be. That's my recommendation. And we've had long deliberations about that at the board level and executive session, which is permitted under safety and security. And that's the reason why we're recommending the SSOs. Both the police chief is behind that. I'm behind that. The SROs play a different purpose. They play the purpose of 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 safety. That's the purpose I want, the SSOs. The other things that the SROs do, which were teaching, counseling, outreach, being an officer in the community. I mean, those officers may have to leave that the schools to go to function somewhere else in the community. That's not what an SSO is going to do. And they're there predominantly to provide a first responder scenario. So there's protocols, there's personnel, there's physical infrastructure. They all go into providing school security. Tonight I'm talking about two particular things. One is additional personnel, which is the SSO model. And also infrastructure improvements. And I'll talk to those about improving enhancements to our exterior doors. I'm not going to have the public discussion here what that, what those are. Our doors are safe. I want to make them safer. Alright, so that's all I'm going to say at this particular point. That's all I can say at this particular point. But I'm going, I'm making a suggestion to make those infrastructure changes. So those are the, those are the three sort of big areas around school security. I'm going to walk through this pretty quickly. If you don't mind, and without sort of skipping up main, main points for the the community here. This is the personnel request. We've got a school security officer, six. If you say, why do you have, why are you asking for six SSOs? And any given day, I think every poll of parents here are thinking, our SSR, SROs and our SSOs are in schools every day. That's not always the case. Things happen, right? From sickness to other things. I would like to have one that floats. And if, if all this, all the elementary SSOs are in in school, that person can go to the middle school. That's a huge building up there and help with the secondary if that's the case. A director of security, if we have all those SSOs and we have all the campus monitors, you need someone to oversee that. And that's what that position is. We will proactively work or continue to work on safety issues. And that's their priority job liaison with the police department around those particular issues. The infrastructure, I talked about the doors, particularly for the, for all the schools. Oxford, you see here, has the safety precaution that I'm talking about. And to do that would be $335,000. The role as a security officer, I won't go through everything, every single thing here. But it's, it's fundamentally to provide safety in the, at the buildings. I heard some descriptions from parents and I, I appreciate you sort of trying to understand what the position does and so on. It's not going to just stand at the front door. That person will be all over the building. The campus monitors have a little bit of a role in the life of the school and the culture of the school, that will remain. I just don't want that person just to sit there. I want that person to move around the school, be outside the school and be in different places. Also help with different functions, whether it be evening or otherwise, because that could be built into the contract. But essentially, they were there to provide the safety for the students, that they would have an arm, they would carry a firearm with them. They would, they would have a taser, they would have a uniform. And with with young kids, this is just my honest professional, as a parent and also as a, as an educator. Our youngest kids, you will adapt to anything. And actually, they highly respect, they'll see people as a police officer for the most part, right? That they highly respect these first responders. And I would fully expect that that these SSOs would actually be become a part of the life of the school. The intent is, and the police chief can talk to this, it would be to retire, to hire retired police officers. And many of them, most of them, maybe all of them from Darien, but I'll let the police chief talk to that in a moment. The training, we're not, we're not designing anything willy nilly. The state, the Connecticut state statute provides for this, provides guidance around the training, provides guidance around the criteria. So we're not doing anything that is not being recommended by the state of Connecticut. We're also in close consultation with Kerma in terms of how we implement these practices. I will say too, just about Kerma, we talked about culture. We just had a an audit, safety audit done and I'll be reported back to the board in the executive session. Qualifications of the police chief can talk to this a little bit, but again, there are strict guidelines around what those qualifications are around state statutes that guide what those are. And I'm assuming the police chief will be allowed in a moment or two just to comment on a couple of these guidelines. The proposed organization is that the director of security would oversee the campus monitors and would also oversee the SSO. They are Darien public school employees. They're not the police department employees. So that's the way, that's the way the SSO model would work, which is different than the SRO model. The role of the campus monitors, most of you probably know what the role of the campus managers are. They check you in. They sit at the front. They also serve as a little bit of a, of a, of a welcoming reception. They're, they function the life of the school. We do not want to just replace those with the school security officer just sitting at that desk. That's not, I don't think that fulfills what we're, what we're really looking to do. The director of security will oversee all of these positions and also oversee the campus monitors, but also liaison with the police department through a memorandum of understanding of what, who, what are the roles? What does the police department have to do? What's the roles of the school, the school system? What's, what's the communication like? These are just, there's about different, about eight different communities of one shape or another. Have elementary security guards or otherwise in the buildings. The proponents do not. So you're asking, well, why would we? Well, I'm just giving you the reasons as a superintendent, I'm recommending that you do. It's, it's a decision that is local. There was discussion about the, the research. The research is inconclusive. There's no doubt about that. There's no doubt about it. I will say this to you though. And it's not the reason to do it. I have asked many people, and even in schools where I was before, from kids. And one of the reasons that the kid's saying, it's maybe you may say, well, it's not the reason to spend that amount of money. I feel safer. Well, I think there's a lot to that nowadays of feeling safer and trying to create safer environments for health and the wellness of everyone. I think that's a tangential thing. I'm not putting, you could argue both sides of having an SSO, right? Because clearly you could, and the, the research is ambivalent of best and inconclusive of best. But certainly, I feel as if there's more chance of having someone be able to respond if they're there and that people feel safer under that scenario and actually are safer. The funding proposal, given the, given the significant amount of money that's involved here, the supplemental capital appropriation would be for the doors. And the supplemental operation appropriation of five, basically 500,000 would be for the SSO program, which would include the director of security. And so we've made an additional appropriation to the town for that, for that, I might. This wouldn't start, essentially probably wouldn't start till January. There was discussion about, can one school do it and another school not? No, we would wait till we have all the schools, elementary schools ready to, ready for someone to go in there and fulfill that role. The research of the memorandum talks to it a bit of it, but again, it's just, it's inconclusive. This is the schedule that we suggest in terms of moving forward for the appropriation. We may have to do some revisions to this, working with the RTMs and the Board of Finance. Police chief, do you want to comment on any, anything that I have mentioned there or clarification that this is something that the police chief also supports and I want to thank him for his leadership in this capacity.
Good evening. For those who don't know me, I'm Donnie Anderson. I'm the chief of police here in Darien. This has been an ongoing conversation through at least.
Don? And I know people would like to hear you.
This has been a conversation that has been going probably for the three or four previous police chiefs to me. I have been the police chief for three years and this conversation was being had before I was the police chief. So just right up front, as I told the board in the executive session several times, I know what I am and I know what I'm not. I do not live here. I do not vote here. But I have been fully immense in this community for almost 40 years. I've been in every single one of your schools, carrying a gun on a regular basis for the last 40 years. And I've always received a warm welcome from the school and I've never had any issues in the school whatsoever. I heard something earlier that some people think maybe that has a political bent or a political agenda to it. From this chief of police, I can assure you that there is no political agenda here. I am a fan and a proponent of public safety for all of our residents here in Darien, whether they're in elementary school, junior high or high school. So that is where I come from. I'm not a public policymaker, although most people think that I am as the chief of police. I am part of the executive branch and not part of the judicial or legislative. I can influence public policy, but I don't hold the purse strings and I don't create public policy. That gives me a wide latitude to come here and give you the honest, straightforward and accurate information as I see it. I'm not here to twist anybody's arm. I'm not here especially to change anybody's mind. I'm here to give you accurate information on why I think school security officers are best practice for the town of Darien. I don't think it might be what people think it's going to be. A school security officer from where I stand, and I have the luxury of being able to put faces to the positions where people sitting here or in the audience don't. I can envision particular people that I would recommend for this position. And I think I told the board in executive session last time, I have worked with over 250 Darien police officers. And there's a fair number of Darien police officers from the past that I absolutely would not recommend for a school security officer position. They might have been professional, well-trained, highly regarded police officers, but they may not fit the role of school security officers as I expected to be. A school security officer in our elementary school is going to be part of the school community. He's not, he or she is not going to be a robo cop. They're not going to be walking around with bandoleros and, you know, you know, eight point hats and, you know, collared brass and all this. No, you're going to be part of the administration of the school. And I think very quickly, it would become ingrained with the school community. And I do believe elementary school students almost across the board will look up to them as a, as a mentor and as a, a person in in a position where they're there to protect them, but they're also to be their friend. I heard several things early about what's the difference between an SRO and an SSO? Everyone in this room has either had elementary, middle school kids or high school kids. Well, we were once elementary, middle school or high school kids. The difference between elementary kids and middle school and high school kids, it's the change of life. Right? When you're, everyone remembers back when they were in elementary school, it is a time of change. It's different than when you're in elementary school. You have different issues facing you. Most elementary school kids, the parents should still be the main influence for them. I think they're still in a position in life that they don't need the mentoring or the guidance that middle school or high school students might need and get from our SROs. I know for a fact, and I'll, I'll say to the public, but I said it to the board before. Since we've had an SRO program at Darien High School for the last almost 10 years, a little over 10 years now, started in August of 2012, there are two, if not three documented incidents that our students are still here because of the intervention of the SRO. That's how important the SRO program has been at Darien High School for the last 10 years. So the earlier we get with kids and the more that they see that we are part of the community and we're not GI Joe, we're not looking to steamroll anybody from an SSO position. I think it's, it's a win.
Are there any questions?
Chief, we talked about some of the duties that a sworn officer would have to pursue versus an SSO. Maybe you could just give a few examples. You know, the difference between, again, an SRO. Maybe you could just give a few examples, you know, the difference between again, an SRO being a sworn officer and an SSO being a retired officer.
An SSO is there to protect the students. They would not have to do everything that a sworn law enforcement officer would have to do, such as in domestic violence circumstances, if I become aware of a domestic violence incident as a sworn Connecticut police officer, I am obligated under the law to make an arrest of the person if there's probable cause. An SSO is not held to that same standard. They don't have to be an investigator. They would assist our investigation, but they're not going to be in the schools investigating crime or incidents. I don't really see an SSO separating kids in the lunchroom that are arguing, yeah. But I just don't see that we're going to have knock down, drag out fights on the playground that an SSO is going to have to get into the middle of, in our elementary school. Body cameras, for example, I'm a proponent of body cameras. I always have been for transparency and accuracy. SSOs are not required to carry body cameras, but that would be my recommendation that SSOs did and only activate the body camera when there wasn't active or believed to be active threat coming into the school. As of now, a police officer would have to activate that body camera with every conversation that we have with the public. If someone walked up to me, if I was out on the road and said, Officer, can I ask you a question? I can't speak to that person until I activate my body camera. That's not what we're expecting an SSO to do in a school. So there are major differences, but the school security officer is there overwhelmingly for the safety of those students. That is what they're there for.
Could I just have one follow-up? And then to Alan, the chain of command, the question might come up, why aren't these individuals, the SSOs managed by the Police Department? I really, I've been briefed extensively how the Police Department is going to be involved in training. Don just covered, you know, hiring and envisioning, you know, potential candidates, but maybe just from the day-to-day management. Talk, talk a little bit about the structure you presented.
So the day-to-day oversight of the SSOs, they are school employees. So the higher president of the school, the Director of Security would be the person who supervises the SSOs. And all of this will be in collaboration with the Police Department, but ultimately we would have the oversight of them. And ultimately, they would be actionable to me ultimately, but the Director of Security would be the person who would be providing oversight in our district.
Can we just, being that they don't report to the police, but report to you, can we just talk about our liability as a town, as a school, as a board? If something were to happen?
So we have, I don't know if Richard wants to talk about this or not, but we have, we have communicated with Karma, our insurance company about this. So they're aware, they're supportive of the model, actually. Do you want to talk about any liability or otherwise?
As long as you're in compliance with the state statute, they're all covered under the district's general liability insurance.
Sort of a follow-up to Mr. Seedy's question. Chief, could you talk a little bit to the difference between a, an SRO's obligation or sworn duty to respond in a crisis situation to protect children and how that might be different for an SSO who is no longer under that oath?
As a practical matter, I don't think you're really going to see any difference. Anyone who we consider for a school security officer position has to be a formerly sworn law enforcement officer in the state of Connecticut who retired or separated from their agency under good standing. They cannot be resigning under suspicion of criminal activity or improper activity. They have to have completed a good portion of a career in good standing. I don't foresee that you're going to see any real difference from the professionalism of a school security officer than a sworn police officer. Our SROs by design, even though they are police officers at Middlesex and Darien High School, they do not conduct criminal investigations just for that reason. Because they're there as a school resource officer and not as an investigator. So we make it very clear, once they become aware of some kind of activity that might be criminal in nature, by our policy, they hand it off to a youth detective and they're not doing it themselves. So they're not investigating the children and the youths and the young adults that they're working with. It would be the same kind of thing at an elementary school. Clearly, the SSO is not going to be involved in any kind of investigation other than the fact that I saw this and now I'm handing it over to somebody else. But from the professional standpoint, again, I have the luxury of potentially putting faces to these positions. And I still envision that the town of Darien, if they go forward with this, this program, you are going to get some of the best retired law enforcement officers in the state of Connecticut to come fill these positions. Because I don't think the town deserves any less. I know Dr. Adley is firm, as am I, that if we go forward with this, we are going to get the best folks that we can get in these positions because our kids deserve it.
In, in the literature, we have that the school security officers, excuse me, will receive training on firearms, crisis response and police officer standards. Will they have training, professional development training through the school?
Yes, because they're going to be our employees, so they have to be very familiar with our, our practices and policies and procedures. So they will have to participate in a variety of professional development opportunities, requirements, actually.
On the topic of professional development, our, the relationship between our children with needs and members of law enforcement is often discussed. Can we talk about our plans as a district? What's required by the state and what our plans are as a district to make sure that our, any SSO is properly prepared to handle all of our children?
Thank you for the question. The same way that I believe police force officers are trained to work with students with learning differences. I'll use the example, I know police members are trained with working with children with autism or adults with autism to know, to know the ways to really interact, to be informed of who the students are who require that kind of intervention, to be able to be supported in the school with any student who has a learning difference or has a plan to really support them, to know the safety way to really intervene. So because social nuances, I'll use the example again of autism. Social nuance, using language, de-escalating behaviors, being trained to know what to do specifically with students, because every student is different, would be an essential part of their training. They also would be supported by the school psychologist or any of the teachers there or speech therapists or personnel that really know the child and are known to them. They'd have a chance to really observe, to model other professionals supporting those students, and that would be an essential part of their training.
Thank you.
Yes, Chief Anderson, Dr. Adley has said that our schools are safe today and we have, we have secure schools. I guess, what is your opinion of that and why do we need this today versus, why do we need this for tomorrow versus today?
I am firmly convinced that Darien schools are safe. The only way that we could make Darien schools exponentially safer than they are right now today would be lock them up like Fort Knox and not let anybody in or let anybody out. That's not a reality. We cannot run a school system like that, as you folks well know. Next step is to have some level of response in place at a school. To one, we publish the fact that we have security at our schools and two, that they are onsite as a deterrent from somebody possibly coming or being there, ready to respond, not responding from some other location to get there. That's the difference. Someone would be onsite and when it, say, well, we don't talk about the money. Everything in life comes down to money, right? I get it. Is it worth the expenditure? In my mind, best practice is going to be, I think, nationwide, school security officers are going to be best practice as we move forward in the next decade or two. Can I prove that empirically? No, but that is my, my best guess of what's going to happen. And I think Darien, as they typically are, should be at the forefront of providing best practice for, for all aspects of public safety, including our schools.
Don, go ahead.
Sorry. So just to, just to build on that, we were handed a sheet that shows that Newtown has SSOs at their elementary schools. So I would think that if anybody has a best practice to use an SSO, Newtown would be one. So thank you.
Can, on that note, can you all talk about your practice? I know you spoke with Newtown. Can you, you talk a little bit about some of the other steps that are not in the memo, all the work that you did to get to this point, to build your recommendation?
Sure. We actually visited Newtown. We spoke to these other districts. We engaged in, as you can see, we've been of a literature review. We spent countless hours, countless meetings, prior to even coming to the board, and then the board has, has participated in countless hours and asked thoughtful, reflective questions, hard questions that we've gone back and tried to review and make sure that we've done this in a thoughtful and a comprehensive way. I think one of the, one of the things that the literature does say is you're going to do it, you need to do it right and thoughtfully with the proper policies, practices and procedures in place and in collaboration with the Police Department. I think we've done that. You know, I, I certainly don't want on such a topic such as this to misspeak. But you and I both know if something were to happen unfortunately in a district, you'd have these people in tomorrow. Let's put them in today.
In this table here, you actually have yes and no's, but that's actually not ones and zeros, right? There's actually, for example, in Newtown, I believe that there's more than one SSO, for example. So I just think it's important to understand that in some cases, yes, might mean more than one staff member.
Per school?
Per school. The question of FERPA came up, and while it's in the memo, it's something I think that is top of mind for a lot of us. Can you all talk about that? Who's wearing, specifically with regards to the body cameras, who's wearing them today? Who might be wearing them tomorrow? And how do we talk about FERPA? And how do we uphold it?
So the cameras would, for SSOs would be the same as, to some degree, as the cameras that are sitting here under FERPA. Our rules and regulations would apply to those.
I don't see any heavy lift with body camera footage under FERPA. I just don't envision a school security officer having to activate a body camera on any type of regular timeframe. And the way I envision it, if they're operating a body camera, FERPA is going to probably be well down in the list of that documented video evidence. Because it's going to be something of major import that is going to probably involve a criminal investigation if that's, if that's the case. We have mechanisms on our body cameras, of course, to comply with FOI regulations that we can't release body cameras involving any juveniles. They have to be electronically redacted out. And it's quite a heavy lift to get that video ready for redaction, but there are ways to do that.
And we do have them in schools now on the SROs, correct?
That's correct. And I can't tell you off the top of my head, but I can tell you with pretty good certainty that I do not believe those body cameras have probably been activated during the school day in the last year. I don't know that for sure, but I think I would have heard about it. Now, perhaps at a after-school event, like a nighttime Friday football game where a fight happens on the playground, then perhaps, but not during the school day, not to my knowledge.
Anyone else?
Julie? Dr. Adley, you mentioned that the school security officers would wear a uniform. Can you describe what you envision? How law enforcement E would they look?
It'd be enough of a law enforcement E that it would be recognizable as, as law enforcement E, I think. I, I'm not sure of the design of it, to be honest with you, but it's not, it's not going to be a full uniformed, because they're not police officers, but.
I think most people on the board and maybe most people here in the public have interacted or at least seen our SSOs in the schools. They don't wear a regular police uniform. They wear, it's a three-button polo shirt, you know, identifying them as a school resource officer. Again, that, that's, that's an I that could be dotted or a T that can be crossed. I, I wouldn't, it wouldn't be a deal breaker for me of what the board wanted an SSO to wear. Perhaps something very similar, maybe just a different color shirt, maybe even light green instead of a light gray or we don't, we're not looking for any officers in school to promote a paramilitary, you know, appearance. That's not, that's not the goal. They do have to be recognizable enough that somebody knows who to go to if they need that person.
Just the, with the uniform, they would have the belt with the firearm and the taser or whatever else is, is on there.
Yeah. And as far as the taser goes, Connecticut law for sworn police officers requires us to have a, what's called, less-than-lethal option. That is a must for a school security officer as well. Clearly, if all you have is a hammer, as the old saw goes, every problem is a nail, right? So a less-than-lethal option is going to be required for any professional SSO. Does it have to be a taser? No, there are other less-than-lethal options available, but you, it would be held to that kind of same standard. You have to go through an escalation of reasonable and, you know, proportional force of any type. You just can't jump to DEFCON 5. So again, that's going to come if this project goes forward with the quality of the people that are in the positions. Some of these people may be people who have taught that for the last 20-plus years and know, know these policies and know how to properly engage with folks of all type in spades. They just know how to do it. If I could just jump back real quick, I just don't want, I don't want to belabor the point, but it's, most people probably would guess, you know, police officers and school security officers who are retired police officers have a very soft spot for children, especially children that may not be in the mainstream. Those are the people that gravitate toward police officers and police officers gravitate toward them. So those type of folks that are in schools are probably going to get the best treatment of any student in one of your schools. I don't envision there would be any type of hesitation to engage anyone that might be of that type of student.
Anything else?
I just want to, I'll disclose just by, I just want to recognize that this is a difficult decision for certainly the board and also members of the community and people may be on different positions on it because it's a very difficult decision. But this is, this is a firm recommendation from your Chief of Police and your Superintendent that it's our recommendation that this is a step to take to the district.
With that, Dennis actually does have a question.
Sorry. Yeah. So, so we have a lot, there's a lot of literature on, do police officers make schools safe and, and do they prevent school shootings? But you mentioned earlier that part of this is just the feeling of being safe. And is there literature on, on the effects of having on police officers or SSOs in a school on, on children and how, how that makes them feel?
Well, I think there's something said about the sociology of it, that we've been, that is, we've been about it, that, I'd have to go back to the specific literature, but, but that is, that is definitely a takeaway that one of the, one of the reasons people would have it was that, one of the reasons not to have it too, by the way, is just to be quite frank about it in literature, is how police officers treat marginalized kids. That's not our experience in this time. That may be experienced somewhere else. It's not the experience in this time. If I thought that for a second, there's no way I would, I would support that, but that, that's just not the experience of our police officers in this time. It's not the way that we operate. It doesn't happen like that in schools. But there is research, this is already around what you're talking about. I can certainly.
Can I just, sorry. One thing also, I think as we look at the timeline and communication plan is that this board was very deliberate in terms of the process that we're laying out. So this becomes a community conversation. I mean, we're running a surplus. I'm not sure we could have covered, you know, the pro forma dollar amounts, but perhaps, and we could have gone that direction maybe with some transfers, but I think this board has been very deliberate in creating a community conversation around this and not rushing this. We've already spent at least a half a dozen hours just this year discussing it in executive session, and I think you've heard the product this evening in the messaging, but we want the community to weigh in and have the appropriate parties be involved.
Thank you. To that end, this is the current timeline and communication plan. You know, we, we are, however, as a board, committed to taking the time that we need to take if that becomes necessary. So the next planned discussion will be next meeting. It'll be a public discussion on the 27th. As Alan noted, we're in, or he and Duke are in discussion. with the RTM to nail down the exact dates. Some of those are approximate or may need to be shifted. But we certainly plan to continue this conversation. We welcome any questions, any comments, and we thank you for the ones we've received so far, and we thank you for your attention this evening. With that, we'll move on to the.
Thank you, Chief.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Truly. Discussion on August 22nd, 2022, financial report and possible action on proposed budget transfers. Thank you, Monica. We'll let everybody go. Thank you all. And then you can wow us, Rich.
So as mentioned, this is the first financial report officially year 23. We are forecasting a positive balance of $314,416. The general education RCs are a positive $490,000. That's largely attributed to the three sections that haven't been filled due to lower than anticipated enrollment at the elementary schools. And then the special education RCs are forecasted at a deficit of $176,355, and that is due to the new state budget, which caps excess cost reimbursement based on town wealth, which would be 70% for Darian. Salaries are forecasted to positive $409,770. It is primarily lower enrollment at the elementary schools for $195,000. The new collective bargaining agreement with both extodians and the maintenance has a new salary schedule for employees hired after July 1st. That's already saved about $52,000. Teacher and residents, about $48,000 million, one, and we did budget two. Budget control remains unused at this point at $145,000 savings. Director of Mental Health, that was just approved, we had forecasted a full-year deficit of $147,000. So the next financial report will bring a transfer forward for the board for that position. We have had some trouble filling some student intern positions, and so we do have some savings of $60,000. As we did mention at the finance committee, we might have to transfer some of those money into substitutes. The operating accounts are a positive $42,000. Dues and memberships are a positive $10,750. That is due to the one less teacher and resident compared to budget. We do have an issue with the fire pump at the middle school. The capital budget did call for the replacement of the fire pump. The current director of facilities has an insurance policy when the fire pump was to be tested at the start of the year, didn't rent a fire pump in case the existing fire pumps slated to be replaced failed, did fail, unfortunately. And so we do have to rent this fire pump until about February or March, when the new fryer pump comes in. And so this is the cost of renting that temporary fire pump that allows our school to stay open. And then we are not anticipating running China exchange this year, and that's a savings of $7,000. Fixed costs are $92,000 of positive. Some of our current policies are slightly better than expected, both property insurance, workers' compensation, and general liability insurance. Health insurance is positive $63,000. That is primarily due to not filling those elementary sections, and then the teacher and resident position that we talked about. Revenue is forecasted at a deficit of $145,000. ELP tuition to date is about $37,000 below expectation. Access cost is $138,000 below expectation. This is based on the budget. We'll obviously update this when we have our first admission on December 1st. But again, the new state budget does cap excess cost reimbursement based on town wealth, and so that is a cap of 70% versus the budget of 75%. And then, on a good note, DSS had their most profitable year to date over $750,000 of revenue, and so revenue exceeded expectations by 31%. So the one transfer we're asking for approval is to fund the cost of the temporary fire pump at the middle school. We are recommending taking funds from the excess revenue from DSS, a portion of the savings from the unfilled teacher and resident, and then a portion of the membership fees for that unfilled teacher.
Hey, any questions or comments? No? Okay. With that, may I have a motion to approve the August 2022 budget transfers? Mr. Sini, seconded by Ms. Parent. All those in favor? That's unanimous. Thank you.
Okay. First reading and discussion on proposed revisions to board policies, Series 6,000, et cetera.
So would you like to go through each policy, or just questions on any particular policy?
I think at least touch on them, since it's a first read, please.
So you'll see that a lot of the recommendations here are to repeal policies that are not necessary, and that could hamper the board's ability to be efficient and effective. The first one being the school calendar. By statute, you're required to set the calendar. This policy requires you to open it up for public comment, which we do as a practice. But if there were emergencies some year, and you didn't have the ability to do that, you either have to amend the policy, or you'd be in violation of the policy. So the recommendation is to repeal. So the next policy is curriculum adoption and revision. Shipman and Goodman's recommendation was to repeal this policy because it's unnecessary, but in recognition of the board's continued desire to oversee curriculum, there's no problem with maintaining it the way it's written. So curriculum guides and course outlines also, the recommendation is to repeal because this is, work is better suited to the district's educational leadership team. Program assessment also to repeal. The Board of Education's curriculum leadership team will report to the Board of Education's Curriculum Subcommittee on Program Assessment. That committee will decide the best way to report to the board. Not everything needs a full-blown presentation to the board, said Dr. Tranberg, and so they will decide some things can be done by memo. Teaching about religion. The law is changing. This policy attempts to capture the current law, but talking about things like pedagogical relevance is probably a little too vague to be enforced, or for teachers to know what that really means. Health education, the health education is required by statute, so we don't need a policy to implement it. And the same thing, family life. The next policy, 6330, family life, education, and instruction on AIDS. Family life education is not mandated by policy, but if you offer it, we're required to allow parents to exempt their students from it. So the recommendation is to repeal both those policies and adopt a new 6330, which sets forth the five statutory areas where parents have a right to exempt their students from any one of those classes. We did at the suggestion of the policy committee, and you can see the language which we struck under written request. The model policy said that it should be within the first two weeks of school, but after discussing this with Dr. Tranberg, we didn't feel there was a reason to put any impediment in on parents' ability to exempt their students.
Just kind of a general question. So the idea that we already have a state policy or statute that governs behavior, we couldn't put in a policy contravening. There's no reason we couldn't have our own policy refining that before we want to do a district.
Correct.
So the notion that just because there's a statute, we don't need one, well, we may actually want one sometimes that conforms within the confines of the statute.
Correct. And it's all, their recommendation is basically not to put you in the position of where you would have to violate a policy, and you would never do that if you were complying with the law.
No, I just heard that point made several times. Well, it's statute, so we don't need one. It's not always the case. We actually really want to have such.
Well, and that's why we maintain the policy on curriculum adoption and revision.
Thank you so much.
Sure. But we're going to recommend repealing the next policy, career and vocational education, because that is also covered by statute. Programs for exceptional students, the recommendation is to repeal, and especially because it, this policy as it stands refers not only to exceptional students, but also disabled students. We follow the law. We don't need a statute to tell us that we follow the law. So instead, the law now requires a policy which we're recommending 6350 for the equitable identification of gifted and talented students. So this now not only reflects our practice, but also the current law, policy 6350. Homebound instruction, the recommendation is to repeal. The district's educational leadership team, the names are very confusing, but anyway, they will oversee homebound instruction where necessary. Summer school, you show the support for summer school through the budgetary process, so you don't need a policy that talks about that. We do allow for credit recovery. We're required to by law. Student organizations, policy 6410. Also, you show your support through the budget, and we do, the administration does monitor participation in any organization that receives a stipend for the board. Student publications, again, stipends are in the budget, but the attorneys were also concerned about some of the language here, again, about legitimate pedagogical concerns and other statements that are vague. Intramurals and interscholastic programs, you should, again, you review the budget every year. You review all those stipends. There's no reason to have a policy saying that you support them. Mrs. Ackman had asked whether there was a legal requirement to provide extracurricular activity. There is no legal requirement. The statute authorizes the board to do so, but you don't have to do it. Continuing education program, the statute requires that we offer GEDs and citizenship courses. We outsource that to Stanford, and again, it's required by law. So now, 6510, this, this is an administrative recommendation, and I hope that this wasn't too confusing in the memo. So the administration is recommending that we revise the grid that talks about class sizes, because putting optimal in there is confusing to the public. So if the board wants to make that revision, then we have consulted with council about a new first page, because the old first page talked about optimal, and that's not really relevant anymore. But all of the items listed in there for the superintendent to consider are all things that Shipman recommends be in the policy on class size.
Is, is there a minimum class size for the secondary schools? You know, I think of, you know, it was a parent night in a, in a class with four students in it. Is that something that you've thought of?
So you have, you have a below number there, which says 18. In practice, we will run advanced placement courses or otherwise, a little bit lower than that, and hopefully double figures. But if not, occasionally we will run it lower than that. There may be other special intervention classes or otherwise that would run lower than that. So it's on a, it's on a case-by-case basis that they're, we're not removing that opportunity to look at that way. But the optimal is just, it's just confusion for people. We, we budget at medium. We don't, we, we, medium enrollment. We use high class size for, for budget purposes, and it just gets, I don't see it really playing a productive thing at this particular point. I just think it's, it's, it's more ambiguity and more, we've got minimum, I've got maximum, and there's latitude in between there.
Yeah. So there was conversation at our policy meeting, whether or not we even needed the minimum, and if it would be, this was a discussion that we wanted to have with the full board, is do you think, would it be appropriate to just have the maximum class size for each age range? I'm curious what other people's thoughts are.
I would, oh, sorry.
No, you're good, Wayne. Go ahead.
I think you should have a minimum, because it provides at least some guidance around A class size, B budget. And you do lose a little bit of social interaction once you go below certain figures, but I, I think you should have a minimum and maximum. I mean, what, what confuses me is, like, the six of 12 that says below 18 to 24. I didn't get a watch, chance to watch your, your meeting. I apologize. But the other K through 1, 2, 3, 4, 5 have actual numbers, not below.
Right.
You know, I kind of look at below as a tilde. So I just, you know, is there, is there a point where we have a policy where the class is not just attracting enough students and you eliminate that class? Again, not for required classes, not for APs, but I'm thinking electives or something like that. And maybe you can discuss how you determine whether or not it's worth conducting those elective classes. Elective might be a very, very important class to a kid who maybe hasn't taken advanced placement or otherwise.
I'm sorry.
And elective, elective course may be a very, very important course for, for students who maybe, maybe aren't taking the APs or otherwise, you know?
Well, I understand that, but you're not going to run a class with two students.
No.
Yeah, I'm going to the extreme, but I'm just trying to figure out.
I think the below, the below is what is, it, it, it's had this terminology for some time. I just didn't want to just completely take away the verbiage that was there, and some guidance, and recognizing that, it's just a recognition that when we do the class sizes for high schools, and so on, you'll see somewhere, some of the lower class sizes there. And we can certainly validate what those are, Mrs. Sini, but I don't know that it would, and we generally have, we generally have discussions to run in hand. I mean, that's generally what we have the discussions to run at practice.
Okay, thank you.
March, recognizing that Shipman and Goodman isn't a huge fan of class size policy, but we want one locally. Do you have this discussion with them at all? Because, again, we do sometimes have high school classrooms, or because we're neighborhood schools, if we have a class year where we have to run under enrollment, we have to run under enrollment because of how we have built our district. Do they offer any thoughts on that?
No, but they were comfortable leaving the below 18, because it gives the superintend and that kind of flexibility, but they don't have specific, because they know that at all high schools, sometimes you just run classes, you know, that are sequenced or whatever, unless than that. Okay. Mr. Brown, thank you.
I don't want to get too far out of the policy, and I enjoy a nice red line, but the question for Chris would be, is there a runway for adoption for some of these new courses? For instance, say Mandarin in the middle school. Does that like take a couple years to get some uptake, or is there any guidelines you would have there as we look at course adoption?
So the, when it was proposed, it was proposed to the full board last November or December. We anticipated at the time, point 6 FTE. It ended up being point 4 FTE. So we have 29 students, I believe, enrolled. So we're pretty much on target to, to what we would expect. So we have two sections, instead of three sections this year, based on that enrollment.
Got it. I just, I'm just trying to understand, to inform the criteria that goes in here. Is there a lag? Do people pick up new courses that we introduce over time, or is it day one they hit the gate? Do you see any sort of trend generally as to how the adoption goes?
If, there are courses that have been approved in the past that still have not run, because they didn't gain traction. So we haven't just run a course because we want it to run so badly. If you see a small class size, it's more likely to be in the middle of a sequence. So a student took, say, French, French III, French IV, and then there's only four students left for, like, the culminating course in French. We want to make sure students have the opportunity to programmatically finish. But if it's the beginning of a program, it's, it's much less likely that we would run it, because it's not going to gain traction, because you don't have, you would, you know what I'm saying? You just, you wouldn't have the numbers to sustain the program, because you usually have attrition. You're not getting more students if they haven't had the foundational courses.
And I apologize. I wasn't looking to go fishing with the question, but now you said we have a list that people haven't taken. Could you show us the list sometime?
I would be interested in knowing if Shipman and Goodman would, might recommend something to give us a little bit of latitude, because we might run an elementary school class under the policy, because we have to, and we might choose to for the high school and possibly the middle school. So I would just be curious to know if there's any existing language out there that helps codify that. There may not be.
I will say that I don't think the board asked me to be non-flexible with this, and I'm not taking a non-flexible approach to it. So just, just an implementation, if I had to drop below because I felt it was necessary, I would do that. I would certainly recommend that.
Okay, but I will check on that. Independent study is another area that the attorneys are recommending be left to the district's curriculum leadership team. Instructional materials, we are going to revise this policy to make it clear that the selection of instructional materials was delegated by the Board of Education Curriculum Subcommittee to the District Curriculum Leadership Team. And finally, the use of copyrighted materials. It tries to capture current law, but it doesn't do it exactly. What Shipman and Goodman will do is they're going to review the regulations, and they'll give them to us in a form that we can share with staff, so they'll be on notice of what is legally permissible.
Any other questions?
Yes, I do. I want to go back to 6350, identification for gifted and talented. So... So the IDEA program is essentially an ELA program. Are we looking to expand that? I mean, how, how are we going to provide services to these students that you mentioned, social studies? Or are, are we going to try and put that all into IDEA or what's the plan here?
Yes.
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 So how will we maintain that? Are we going to be then expanding hours and time or it's just going to be?
So we have our gifted education program review that was completed two years ago. One of the recommendations in there is to revisit the criteria for identification. And within that was to also look at identification in the area of giftedness. And if you are identifying in the area of giftedness, which is a best practice, you're providing programming so students are exploring their own interests. So it just, it's a lot of curriculum work that's on the, on our plan of making improvement. So it would ultimately would require a larger program.
Look more like the ninth grade IDEA program?
Yes, and that's coming up in.
But at a younger age?
Yes.
So more of an independent study?
Yes. So perhaps looking at more of a culminating experience, so to speak, in the eighth grade year and having students explore different areas of interest and focus earlier in elementary. So they can have that to end the middle school experience.
Interesting. Great. Thank you.
So from a policy perspective, what we're trying to do is capture the fact that we want to look at giftedness with a broader lens than we have up to this point.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Okay, these will come back next meeting. With that, further discuss, discussion and possible action on proposed board master agenda for August 2022 to February 2023.
We did make some changes from the last board meeting, if I can remember what they were. They are in there somewhere. Trust me, they were made.
You'll, you'll see, like, it's September 27th of updated for the discussion we were going to have and so on, or have had this evening. The various policies. The reporting on the test and was rescheduled because of the accreditation visit. So that was moved to October 25th.
Any questions? This is up for a vote, vote this evening. Yes, Dennis?
Just a quick one. I'll ask my colleague, Mr. Brown. On November 9th, we have discussion of proposed new courses for Darien High School. Would that be an appropriate time to see the low enrollment classes as well? And we can kind of look at what's coming and what's being under, underutilized?
You know, you'd rather have it early. Defer to staff on that. Ask if they can have that ready. Sorry, Chris, you're back in the spot.
No, I think that would come with, there is a class size report that the high school does, and that might be a good time to incorporate that.
Awesome. Thank you.
Anything else? Okay. We have a motion to approve the proposed board master agenda for August 2022 to February 2023. Mr. Maroney, seconded by Ms. Best. All those in favor? That is unanimous. Public comment, Mr. Trinberg, Dr. Trinberg.
For those participating.
Oh, did I skip? Thank you.
Personal report. Sorry, March.
That's okay. Sorry.
So you noticed we had a couple more resignations, but the good news is since we published the agenda, we have filled two of those positions. We do still have five positions open and we're looking diligently every day.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
Sorry, this is, I perhaps should have asked this during the finance update. But the, the internships that we did not fill, do we keep looking for interns or has that ship sailed?
Yeah, so we're, we keep looking, but there are some that come available in the spring. So it's too late for the fall, but we're continuing to look for the spring. There's just nobody.
And we place them, like, do they apply to work at a particular school or do we?
No.
Place them in the schools that they're in?
We place them.
So we would maybe recalibrate that if we have some in the spring.
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Now, public comment.
For those participating in person, please approach the microphone and wait to be acknowledged by the chairperson. For those participating via Zoom, please click the raise hand option. Facilitator will acknowledge and unmute you when it is your turn to speak. For all participants, please state your name and address for the record log. Each participant will have up to three minutes to comment. We will, we will begin with those in person.
Anyone in person?
Good evening. Katie Lublin, Maplewood Drive. Regarding the possibility of adding the seven FTEs for elementary SSOs. I hope that in further discussions, we can have a more robust conversation about what sort of training would be given and required for any such people that understandably have a history as with law enforcement and security, but most likely do not have any sort of professional experience in working with children and in an educational setting. And my mind, that is one of many very important pieces to, to just a daily interaction. So I would hope that there can be a discussion on what we would expect these people to learn and not necessarily come to the table with, given their professional background, about what it means to be in a school setting, what our expectations are of all adults who come through that door, of anyone who is Darien Public School staff. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in public?
There are no raised hands.
Give me a second. Oh, okay.
Hi, Joanna Walsh, 17 Pleasant Street. There also was really no discussion about the director of security, why they don't need a law enforcement background. So more discussion on that would be very welcome. Thank you.
Has anyone raised their hand since then? Okay, with that.